We thank you for your patience this evening. This is our first meeting back in the council chambers in about four months. So we had a few, um, a few items that we needed to, to work through. So I will now call to order the city county council meeting from Monday, September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. And we will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge allegiance led by councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I invite Pastor Tim to lead us in prayer and the pledge. I believe he's in the council chambers.
Thank you very much. Pastor Lindsay.
Over their health or watch over their families, Lord, all the cares that they bring into this. May they be able to set those aside, knowing that you're able to do exceeding abundance of all that we ask for. Thank. I pray, Lord, that what we do tonight will honor you. So we ask, Lord, that you help us this evening. And we pray this all in Jesus's name. Amen. Join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Leader Lewis, and thank you, Pastor Lindsay. Our clerk will now conduct a voice roll call. Councillors, please signify by stating your name and answering present on the clerk's reading of your name so that we have a clear record of who was in attendance. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Adamson.
Councillor Adamson, present.
Councillor Anay.
Councillor Anay, present.
Councillor Bain.
Councillor Bain, present.
Councillor Barth.
Barth, present.
Councillor Boots.
Councillor Boots, present.
Councillor Brown.
Councillor Brown, present.
Councillor Carlino.
Councillor Carlino, present.
Councillor Gilk.
Councillor Gilk, present.
Councillor Ethan Evans.
Councillor Ethan Evans, present.
Councillor Jared Evans.
Councillor Jared Evans, present.
Councillor Graves.
Councillor Graves, present.
Councillor Graves, we barely hear you.
Councillor Graves, present.
Thank you. Councillor Gray. Councillor Gray.
Councillor Gray, present.
Thank you. Councillor Hart.
Councillor Hart, present.
Councillor Jackson.
Councillor Jackson, present.
Councillor Jones.
Councillor Jones, present.
Councillor Larison.
Councillor Larison, present.
Councillor McCormick. I'm sorry. Councillor Lewis, I'm sorry.
Councillor Lewis, present.
Thank you. Councillor Mascari.
Councillor Mascari, present.
Councillor McCormick.
McCormick, present.
Councillor Maury.
Councillor Maury.
Councillor Oliver.
Oliver, present.
Councillor Osalee.
Councillor Osalee, present.
Councillor Potts.
Councillor Potts, present.
Councillor Ray. Councillor Ray. Councillor Robinson.
Councillor Robinson, present.
Thank you, Mr. President. We currently have twenty-four councillors.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. And this evening, I would like to ask Ms. Callie, Ms. Callie Kennington, who is Senior Planner for Engagement and Census twenty twenty, to talk about the twenty twenty census this evening with us. Ms. Kennington.
Hi, thank you for having me. Um, yes, I lead Count Me Indy, which is Indy's complete count campaign for the twenty twenty census. We've been at it for about two years now, and we're coming up on our deadline. So the deadline to respond to the census is just in about a couple of weeks. It's September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Currently, sixty-five point one percent of Marion County has self responded to the census, which is what our campaign is all about, self responding. Um, but more people have actually filled out their census. So Indianapolis's area census office, um, which, which scope is larger than that of just Marion County, has enumerated eighty-eight point four percent of households. To give you an idea of where we are with our self response, um, in two thousand and ten, our final self response was sixty-five point three percent. So we are only point three percent away from beating two thousand and ten's self response numbers. Um, throughout the pandemic, we've had to pivot a lot, um, as most organizations have had to do. Um, we've continued to work with major organizations in the city such as La Plaza, Indianapolis Urban League, Immigrant Welcome Center, Indianapolis Public Library, the United Way of Central Indiana, the Indiana Department of Education, and much more to get census messaging out to households across Marion County. But we need your help. Um, with just two weeks left, we would love if, um, you could create a video to talk about the importance of the census to your constituents. Um, if you need talking points, we are more than happy to put together some for you. Um, so please do reach out. And I'm sure you must have seen, um, we have some really nice, um, T-shirts left over, some swag that we were giving away at festivals and events last year. We have, um, select sizes still available, so if you would like one to create a video for constituents, um, we do have some census T-shirts left. Um, so please help us finish strong, um, and beat two thousand and ten's self response rate by letting everyone you know to complete their census online, by phone, or by mailing back in their paper form. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kennington. Are there any questions, uh, Ms. Kennington, from members of the council? Councillor Potts, and Councillor Potts, thank you also for ensuring that Ms. Kennington was with us this evening.
Of course, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Callie. I don't have any, uh, specific question for you. I just wanted to thank you for being here because the, the census, it is such a significant part of the work that must be done because it then determines funding, resource allocation, redistricting, so many things that are important to so many of our neighbors here in Indianapolis. So I just wanted to thank you, Callie, again, for all of your hard work and your entire team, and just hope that, uh, all of my colleagues will take you up on your advice to, uh, post a video out there so that we can get all of our constituents counted this year. Thank you, Callie. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Thank you both. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held electronically in, in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, at seven o'clock PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before the regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osalee, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinance. Fiscal ordinance number fourteen, general ordinance numbers thirty through thirty-six, special ordinance numbers two, three, and five, general resolutions numbers fourteen through nineteen. Joseph H. Choxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communication.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you, councillors. And the next item on our agenda is approval of journals for August the tenth, two thousand and twenty. Do I consent?
Consent.
Thank you very much. We have no presentation of petitions or moral special resolutions and council resolutions this evening. So the next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two thirty-seven, introduce councillors Carlino, Potts, Osalee, Robinson, Adamson, Gray, Oliver, Ray, Graves, Barth, Barth, Boots, Jones, Brown, McCormick, Ethan Evans, Larison, Jared Evans. Refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Amends chapter two seventy, two seventy-nine, article two of the code regarding the organization of the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department. Proposal numbers two forty-eight and two forty-nine, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number two forty-eight, introduced by councillor Mascari, approves an additional appropriation of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred forty dollars in the two thousand and twenty budget of the Marion County Information Services Agency Enhanced Access Fund for the conversion of the, of Channel sixteen to high definition and implementing a new hosting service for the reporters' office. Proposal number two forty-nine, introduced by councillors Barth and Potts, approves an additional appropriation of fifty thousand dollars in the two thousand and twenty budget of the Department of Metropolitan Development, Public Art, for Neighborhood Subfund of the Redevelopment Fund to support the two thousand and twenty Quick Action Community Connection Grant Program, administered through the Arts Council of Indianapolis, which seeks to address the challenges of the public nineteen pandemic, artists envision a more just and equitable future for everyone. Proposal numbers fifty through fifty-five, refer to the Municipal Corporations Committee and were introduced by councillor Gray. Proposal number two fifty adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Airport Authority and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporation for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty-one, adopts the operating and maintenance budgets of the tax levies and of the budgets and tax levies of the Capital Improvement Board of Managers and establishes appropriation for said municipal corporations for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty-two, adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Health and Hospital Corporation and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporations for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty-three, adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporations for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty-four, adopts the operating and maintenance budgets and tax levies of the Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, Indigo, and establishes appropriations for said municipal corporations for two thousand and twenty-one. Proposal number two fifty-five, introduced by councillor Robinson, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves an additional appropriation of one million, three hundred thirty-seven thousand, five, five hundred dollars in the two thousand and twenty budget of the Office of Public Health and Safety for solidated general fund for the purpose of funding council district crime prevention grants. Proposal number two fifty-six to two sixty-two, refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number two fifty-six, introduced by councillor Maury, authorizes a special limit, a, a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Murray, Muirfield, and Franklin Meadows subdivisions in District twenty-five. Proposal number two fifty-seven, introduced by councillor Maury, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Misty Woods Lane and Winter Windport in District twenty-five. Proposal number two fifty-eight, introduced by councillors Osalee and Adamson, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Seventeenth Street and Bell, and Bell Fountain Street in Districts eleven and seventeen. Proposal number two fifty-nine, introduced by councillor Jones, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Belmont Avenue and Old Raymond Street in District sixteen. Proposal number two sixty, introduced by councillor Osalee, authorizes intersection controls at the intersection of Eighteenth Street and Neil Byrne Street in District eleven. Proposal number two sixty-one, introduced by councillor Maury, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Bentley Commons, Bentley Farms, and Bentley Estate subdivisions in District twenty-five. Proposal number two sixty-two, introduced by councillor Maury, authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Whittaker Farms and Feather Trace, Feather Trace subdivisions in District twenty-five. Proposal numbers two sixty-three, two seventy-seven, and two seventy-eight, refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal number two sixty-three, introduced by councillors Ethan Evans, Carlino, Hart, Graves, and McCormick, urges the city of Indianapolis and Marion County to hold a moratorium on the construction of a, of any new jails or similar structures for at least fifty years after the completion of a criminal justice campus and resolves the portions of public safety funding be used for mental health care, fighting homelessness, economic development without displacement, substance abuse recovery, education initiatives, healthy food access, and youth programming. Proposal number two seventy-seven, introduced by councillor Robinson, appoints Maggie Lewis to the, to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Proposal number two seventy-eight, introduced by councillor Robinson, appoints Paul Anay to the Early Intervention Planning Council. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders priority business. Proposal numbers two sixty-four through two seventy-six, and proposal numbers two seventy-nine through two eighty-two are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no councillor wishes to call down the proposal or any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down a proposal for reconsideration?
Mr. President.
Yes, it's been a councillor Hart.
Yes, sir. I move that proposal number two seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty, rezoning case, two thousand and nineteen, Z O N dash zero eighty-seven, located at twenty-seven oh one South Hunter Road, be scheduled for hearing before this council at this regular meeting on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM, and that the general council read the announcement of such hearing and enter the same in the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, uh, councillor Hart. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is partly moved. Moved and seconded. I would like to call now, um, for a vote on councillor Hart's motion. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call, please?
Councillor Adamson.
Councillor Adamson, aye.
Councillor Anay.
Councillor Anay, aye.
Councillor Bain.
Councillor Bain, aye.
Councillor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Councillor Boots.
Councillor Boots, aye.
Councillor Brown.
Councillor Brown, aye.
Councillor Carlino.
Councillor Carlino, aye.
Councillor Gilk.
Councillor Gilk, aye.
Councillor Ethan Evans.
Councillor Ethan Evans, aye.
Councillor Jared Evans.
Councillor Jared Evans, aye.
Councillor Graves.
Councillor Graves, aye.
Councillor Gray.
Aye.
Councillor Hart.
Councillor Hart, aye.
Councillor Jackson.
Councillor Jackson, aye.
Councillor Jones.
Councillor Jones, aye.
Councillor Larison.
Councillor Larison, aye.
Councillor Lewis.
Councillor Lewis, aye.
Councillor Maury. Councillor Mascari.
Councillor Mascari, aye.
Councillor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Councillor Maury. Councillor Oliver. Councillor Oliver. Councillor Osalee.
Councillor Osalee, aye.
Councillor Potts.
Councillor Potts, aye.
Councillor Ray.
Councillor Ray, aye.
Councillor Robinson.
Councillor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So what is the vote on that, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry. That is twenty-three with two non-voting.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to call on councillor Kim to, uh, read the announcement of a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. This council will hold a public hearing on rezoning petition number two thousand and nineteen, Z O N zero eight seven, council proposal number two seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty, this regular meeting on October twelfth, two thousand and twenty. Such meeting to convene at seven PM in these council chambers in the City County Building in Indianapolis. This petition proposes to rezone four point five eight one acres at twenty-seven oh one South Hunter Road in the DA District, the CS District, to provide for a self-storage facility. Written objections that are filed with the clerk of the council shall be heard at such time, or the hearing may be continued from time to time as found necessary by the council. This concludes the announcement, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Kim. Proposal two seventy-nine, two thousand and twenty, a separate public hearing. If no one wishes to call down any of the other rezoning cases for, uh, a public hearing, they will pass into law. All right, seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. Proposal number two eighty-three is a rezoning ordinance, uh, certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission on August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. If no councillor wishes to call this case down for public hearing, the commission's denial will stand. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, the proposal will stand as denied. The next item on our agenda is special orders, uh, public hearing. And I do believe that we have councillor Maury, councillor Maury, who, um, has a motion that he wanted to make.
Mr. President.
Councillor Anay.
Mr. President, um, councillor Maury is back.
Mr. President.
Councillor Maury.
We are still working on some issues as regard to proposal number two twenty-five, two thousand and twenty, rezoning case, two thousand and twenty dash C Z N dash eight zero one. And the petitioner has agreed to a continuance of this matter. Therefore, I move that the public hearing for proposal number two two five, two thousand and twenty, rezoning case, two thousand and twenty dash C Z N dash eight zero one, be postponed until September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty council meeting.
Second.
I can add.
Mr. President, we didn't hear you. Did you call for a vote?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Adamson.
Councillor Adamson, aye.
Councillor Anay.
Councillor Anay, aye.
Councillor Bain.
Councillor Bain, aye.
Councillor Barth.
Councillor Barth, aye.
Councillor Boots.
Councillor Boots, aye.
Councillor Brown.
Councillor Brown, aye.
Councillor Carlino.
Councillor Carlino, aye.
Councillor Gilk.
Councillor Gilk, aye.
Councillor Ethan Evans.
Councillor Ethan Evans, aye.
Councillor Jared Evans.
Councillor Jared Evans, aye.
Councillor Graves.
Councillor Graves, aye.
Councillor Gray.
Councillor. Councillor Gray, aye.
Thank you. Councillor Hart.
Councillor Hart, aye.
Councillor Jackson.
Councillor Jackson, aye.
Councillor Jones.
Councillor Jones, aye.
Councillor Larison.
Councillor Larison, aye.
Councillor Lewis.
Councillor Lewis, aye.
Councillor Mascari.
Councillor Mascari, aye.
Councillor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Councillor Maury. Councillor Maury. Councillor Oliver.
Councillor Maury, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Oliver. Councillor Oliver. Councillor Osalee.
Councillor Osalee, aye.
Councillor Potts.
Councillor Potts, aye.
Councillor Ray.
Councillor Ray, aye.
Councillor Robinson.
Councillor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is twenty-four two zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries. There is no business under special orders and finished business, and so the next item on our agenda is special orders, uh, final adoption. Uh, proposal number two two six, which would refer to the Administration and Finance Committee and also the Public Works, um, Committee. Um, I will ask Chairman Mascari, uh, to please, please read his report and, um, and make the motion. Uh, I'm sorry, please read his report, and then I will ask that chairman Adamson would also read his report and then make the motion on proposal number two two six. So Chairman Mascari, if you wish, if you would begin. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Uh, proposal two twenty-six to two twenty authorizes the city to acting through the Metropolitan and Thoroughfare Special Taxi District to issue one new money bonds in the amount of not to exceed fifty million dollars to finance certain street, road, bridge, and traffic signals, curb sidewalk improvements in the district, and two, refunding bonds in the amount of not exceeding a hundred and forty-five million dollars to refund all the portions of the callable outstanding interroad revenue bonds, and approves their actions and their, their hopeful. Do pass, I get nine zero.
Chairman Adamson? Sorry, you still don't mute chairman Adamson?
I believe we may. Chairman Adamson?
Sorry. Yeah, as Chairman Mascari has read the details of the proposal, I'll just read the. I'll just read the notes from the public works committee meeting. This, the details of this proposal are as follows. Approves the issuance of bonds by the Metropolitan Thoroughfare District, or MTD, for fifty million dollars of new money bonds for twenty-twenty-one transportation infrastructure projects, the third series of one hundred and twenty million dollars approved in two thousand eighteen. Up to one hundred and forty-five million in refunding bonds to refinance all or a portion of the city's callable outstanding in the road bonds. Per statute, the MTD has twice the debt capacity of the city and refinancing meets bond bank refunding policy of a minimum of three percent PV savings. Current refinancing plan estimates five point four million dollars in PV savings, five point two as of eight-five-twenty. This translates to about three hundred and thirty-five thousand available for additional capital projects every year through maturity. The MTD is a special taxing district created by Indiana Code thirty-six-nine-six-point-five, and the MTD covers all of Marion County and is governed by the Board of Public Works. And the MTD's purpose is to finance road and street improvements throughout through the issuance of bonds. Counsel McCormick moved and seconded by Counsel Carlino to send proposal two-twenty-six two thousand twenty to the full council to do pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of ten to zero to one with Counsel Boots abstaining, and I so move. Second.
Motion is properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? You know, is there anyone here from the administration to speak to proposal number two-two-six?
Mr. President, Dan Parker from Public Works.
Yes, Director Parker, please.
And thank you, Mr. President. Sarah Reardon from the Bond Bank, I'm here as well.
Welcome, welcome to both of you. Are there any questions from fellow counselors? Very good. Well then, we will now proceed to a roll call for our vote in proposal number two-two-six. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Counsel Anay, aye.
Counsel Bane.
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Counselor Boots abstains.
Thank you. Counsel Brown.
Counsel Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Aye.
Counsel Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver. Counsel Oliver.
Counsel Oliver, aye.
Counsel Osalee.
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Three, I'm sorry, twenty-four yea, one abstention.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two-two-seven, referred to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number two-twenty-seven, two-twenty-eight, and two-twenty-nine together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number two-twenty-seven approves a resolution adopted by the Metropolitan Development Commission declaring an amendment to the consolidated redevelopment allocation area for the purpose of designating a taxpayer for the purposes of collecting tax increment on property taxes paid on certain personal property. Proposal number two-twenty-eight approves the issuance of up to one hundred and fifty-five million dollars in bonds by the redevelopment district, a special taxing district existing to, existing to finance an expansion of the Indiana Convention Center on Pan Am Plaza. Proposal number two-twenty-nine approves an interlocal agreement between the city of Indianapolis and the Capital Improvement Board of Managers of Marion County to govern the finance, leasing, construction, and the operation of facilities consisting of the convention center expansion project on Pan Am Plaza and authorize the execution of the project. All three proposals were heard together in committee. Thomas Cook, Chief of Staff, Scarlett Martin, Director of Community and Economic Development, Andy Malin, Executive Director of the Capital Improvement Board, and Leonard Hoops, President of Visit Indy, gave a PowerPoint presentation. The individuals discussed the benefits of the expansion of the Pan Am Plaza project. They shared that the whole city could do several conventions on the north and south side at the same time. It would reconnect two hundred and eight conventions worth one point one billion in economic impact, one thousand hotels connected, one thousand rooms, hotel rooms connected, fifty thousand square foot. Tom McAllen, President of Kite, stated that there were several, there were several parcels for the development, adding that the second hotel will have twenty-three levels high in a ballroom that will be connected with, between the two hotels. Kite made the following commitments. The creation of four hundred jobs at the hotel with two hundred more in the future, making that a total of six hundred jobs. Fourteen dollars an hour of minimum wage, the highest in the city's hotel history, plus pool benefits. Construction of the headquarters hotel must begin in twenty-twenty-two and anticipated, anticipating two thousand five hundred construction jobs. Several questions were asked throughout the presentation. Proposal passed out of committee by a vote of eleven to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Are there comments from counselors? Right, Counsel Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to comment this expanded convention space that Chairwoman Lewis mentioned. It's going to allow Indianapolis to compete for some of the biggest conventions that we have, that we have not been able to compete for in the past. And I think it's important to remember that the next step from there means that that's going to be an integral part of the economic stimulation of our downtown in recovery from the coronavirus. So I'm just so grateful to Chairwoman Lewis and to the administration for their leadership on this. I think this will be a great thing for our city, and I hope my colleagues join me in supporting it this night. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I believe I saw Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very excited about this coming to downtown. But I also want to applaud the developer in committing to using union construction workers, highly skilled union construction workers. Nearly three thousand skilled tradesmen and women will be working on this project. One point nine million estimated hours of work. These people who do this work are the highest level, skilled level. We are going to get beautiful buildings, and the people who are working on them are going to do an excellent job. So that is also a giant boost to our economy. So I would urge all of my fellow counselors to vote yes on these three proposals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Maury.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things I think is important to remember for every vote on this proposal is a lot of downtown business is made up of convention business. Indianapolis has been the number one city for convention business for many years. This project not only excels us into that next level, but it also ensures that the business we have now continues to come to Indianapolis. One of the issues we've had with our convention business is the fact that we've been told that we don't have enough ballroom space or a big enough ballroom for certain conventions, which are some of our biggest conventions. And if we were not to do this, we would lose a lot of that business. A lot of business that we agreed to said that, you know, we told them we would have this done. So I think this is such a crucial proposal and a crucial development for our city. You know, you look back years past when they said we were going to build a dome for a football team, they didn't know that we had a team. But look at us now. We have a second stadium with the statue, with the bronze statue of a man that helped build that stadium. This is our next level opportunity to get and continue to attract more and more convention business to the city of Indianapolis. I am proud to co-sponsor these proposals, and I'm proud to say that Indianapolis is the home of the best convention city.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Neim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this evening is very significant for the city of Indianapolis and our future. Many years ago, city leaders decided this would be a convention city, and we would be in the convention business, the amateur sports capital of the world. Tonight, we establishes that current city leaders understand that vision and that we are voting to carry that on and that we understand the importance of the moment. I agree with my colleague Counselor Potts that this can have a tremendous opportunity to revitalize the downtown area, attract new businesses, as Counsel Maury said, while retaining current convention business. So I think it's an amazing opportunity, one we cannot let pass up. And I think, again, the, this expansion and this continued effort is, is one that we must, we must do. So I'm proud to co-sponsor this and I hope that this passes unanimously this evening. I yield back.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to comment quickly that this is a, I think that this vote tonight is a shining moment in our city's history. In a time when a lot of cities are grappling with COVID nineteen and the effects of that, our city is doubling down, and we're saying we're moving forward. When the convention business comes roaring back, we're going to be in position to expand on all the things that my colleagues have mentioned today with regards to the conventions that we don't currently have. Having been open somewhat already at some capacity, we're already taking conventions from other cities right now, Louisville, Chicago. So I think this is going to be an absolutely shining moment in our city's history.
Counsel Jackson, Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to everything that my fellow counselors have already stated, I would like to remind counselors that, and those who are viewing, that this also brings when the convention center opens, the hotels that will be there, the minimum, and I won't say minimum job, but minimum pay will be fourteen dollars an hour. It can go up for there, but it brings substantial pay for those that'll be working there. So start pay, as you would say, not a minimum wage. Had to explain this to one of the trustees, so, and he was surprised that we negotiated it and thank those who are negotiation in the mayor's administration and thank those fellow counselors who've been advocating for years that we put our foot down and let them know that we are a city that advocates for our citizens and for livable pay here so they can have livable wages to make a decent life for themselves and their families. But fourteen dollars an hour, and that's significant. So I'm proud to stand on that. So I urge my fellow counselors to vote for this proposal tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo my support for this proposal and to ducktail into what Counsel Jackson had mentioned, and that cannot be understated. The importance of the standard of a fourteen-dollar minimum wage for this hotel not only benefits the individuals who are working at this hotel, but it sets a standard and a threshold of competition for the other hotels to follow. So I think this is a great way to start that process, moving in that, in that right direction for some of the hardest workers in the city of Indianapolis, and that is the frontline workers of our hotels and restaurant industry in Indianapolis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we will now proceed to roll call for our vote. Madam Clerk.
Counsel Adamson.
Counsel Adamson, aye.
Counsel Anay.
Counsel Anay, aye.
Counsel Bane. Counsel Bane. Counsel Barth.
Please come back to, Counsel Bane is having an audio issue.
Counsel Bane. I'll circle back. Counsel Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counsel Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counsel Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counsel Carlino.
Carlino, aye.
Counsel Dilk.
Counsel Dilk, aye.
Counsel Ethan Evans.
Ethan Evans, aye.
Counsel Jared Evans.
Counsel Jared Evans, aye.
Counsel Graves.
Counsel Graves, aye.
Counsel Gray.
Counsel Gray, aye.
Counsel Hart.
Counsel Hart, aye.
Counsel Jackson.
Counsel Jackson, aye.
Counsel Jones.
Counsel Jones, aye.
Counsel Larison.
Counsel Larison, aye.
Counsel Lewis.
Counsel Lewis, aye.
Counsel Mascary.
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counsel McCormick.
Hello, McCormick, aye.
Counsel Maury.
Counsel Maury, aye.
Counsel Oliver.
Counsel Oliver, aye.
Counsel Osalee.
Counsel Osalee, aye.
Counsel Potts.
Counsel Potts, aye.
Counsel Ray.
Counsel Ray, aye.
Counsel Robinson.
Counsel Robinson, aye.
Counsel Bane.
Counsel Bane, aye.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two-thirty-one, referred to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, President Osalee. Proposal number two-thirty-one. Amends Articles Four, Chapter Two-oh-two of the Revised Code of Intermittent Discrimination Outcomes in the City and County Contracting Practices described in two thousand nineteen City of Indianapolis Study. Coming of blood, approached the office of minority business development. The city of Indianapolis gave an overview of the consolidated city of Indianapolis and Marion County's MBE, WBE, VBE, DOBE business utilization plan in Indianapolis government, which they plan to assure that minority women, minority women, veteran and disabled-owned businesses, enterprises have an equal opportunity to participate in the purchase of public works, goods, supplies, services, and public-private partnerships in the city of Indianapolis and Marion County government. Counsel Jackson moved, seconded by Counsel Robinson, to amend proposal two-thirty-one. Motion carried by a vote of nine to one, with Counsel Hart casting the negative vote. Counsel Hart moved, seconded by Counsel Maury, to amend proposal two-three-one as amended. The motion did not carry by a vote of eight to two, with Counsel Hart and Counsel Maury casting the affirmative votes. Counsel Jackson moved, seconded by Counsel Graves, to propose two-thirty-one to the full council. They do pass recommendation, motion carried by a vote of nine to one, with Counsel Maury casting the negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Second. A second motion.
Thank you, Chairman, and for the motion and for the second. I believe that there is a floor amendment on this. Thank you, Chairman, and for the motion and for the second. I believe that there is a floor amendment on this?
Yes, Mr. President, I do have an amendment. If I may?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend Section two-zero-two dash four-zero-four one D under Section one of Proposal two-thirty-one two thousand twenty, by deleting the language that is double-shrinking through in red and adding the double-underlined language in red in the highlighted portion to read, Mr. President, as follows. Skipping down to letter F. Mr. President, in the event, a vendor requests an appeal of a remedy imposed under Section two-zero-two dash four-zero-four or upheld under Section, under two-zero-two dash four-zero-four, any penalties imposed or upheld shall be suspended for the duration of the appeal. Also, Mr. President, under letter D, Section three, impose a different remedy under Section two-zero-two dash four-zero-four. And under Roman numeral four, letter A, we're going to change the thirty days, Mr. President, to fifteen days. Throughout the body of that, thirty days to fifteen days. And at the end of Section, subsection A, we'll change one hundred and eighty days to ninety days. And, Mr. President, that concludes the amendment. I so move.
Second.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded to amend proposal number two-thirty-one. Is there, are there any questions or comments? I'd saying none. Madam Clerk, would you, would you do a roll call for the amendment?
Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Adamson, yea.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Gray, I'm sorry. Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larson?
Counselor Larson, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Maschary?
Counselor Maschary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye, Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll now entertain a motion on proposal number two-thirty-one as amended.
So moved.
Very good. It's improperly moved and seconded.
Seconded, Oliver, seconded.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from counselors? I'd saying none. Madam Clerk, we'll proceed to a roll call vote.
Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, nay.
Counselor Bain?
Anay, nay.
Counselor Barth?
Counselor Bain, nay.
I'm sorry, was it yea or nay? Thank you. Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Counselor Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, nay.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, nay.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larson? Counselor Larson?
Counselor Larson, aye.
Counselor, Counselor Lewis?
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Maschary?
Counselor Maschary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, one of the things I had a question, I had an issue on this is the ten percent that they could be penalized or withheld. I don't understand where that money goes and then where it would be distributed or directed. I have not had that question answered yet, and I have not had the questions I asked in committee answered yet. So I will continue to be a nay.
Thank you. Counselor Oliver?
Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
The answer you just gave me is the same thing.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty, aye, five nay.
You give my all right, thank you very much. Thank you, counselors. I will ask Counsel, Counsel Kim to provide an answer to the question that I think that I just heard asked by my colleague Counselor Maury. Counsel Kim?
Thank you, Mr. President. As clarification for that ten percent penalty, it's merely withholding ten percent of future payments. The money would stay within the contracting agency's department.
Thank you, thank you very much, Counsel Kim. There is no business under Special Service District Councils, and there is no business under New Business, so the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President?
Chair recognizes Counsel Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the final motion for adjournment by Counselor Maury in memory of Paul and Vivian Freeman and Alice Nance, by Counselor Adamson in memory of Gary Tackett, by all Democrat counselors in memory of Jennifer Williams, by Counselor Lewis in memory of Dolores Teague. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and the respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request the motion be made part of the permanent records of this body, and then a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising on this action.
Thank you, Counsel Maury. Thank you, Counsel Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received and the request is so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.